Can you say test one more time?
Can you hear me now, Stephanie?
I can, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you. That's all. All right, we're gonna, we have some recognitions we want to do ahead of the meeting and then we have swearing in before we start the meeting, so I'd like to get going just a little bit early. We have two retiring council members, Mr. Rice and Mr. Allen. If the two of you would please stand for the last time. Well, maybe not the last time, but for the last time as part of the council. Yeah, come on up. I have a proclamation to honor you for your years of service. I'm not so sure you're not older than that. So we want to thank you for your time in service to the city and the community, and I'll start with the proclamation. We'll give you a key to the city, and then there is another award that is going to be presented to you as well. So proclamation recognizing and expressing appreciation for the outgoing council member Dan Allen and outgoing council member Steve Rice. Whereas today we honor outgoing council member Dan Allen and council member Steve Rice for their numerous contributions to improving the City of Mitchell while serving on the Mitchell, uh, City of Mitchell City Council. Whereas Councilman Dan Allen was appointed in 2006 representing Ward Two and was re-elected in each election until he moved into Ward Three in 2014. After moving into Ward Three, Councilmember Allen was then appointed in 2014 to represent Ward Three and has been re-elected in each election since that appointment. Councilmember Allen represented Wards Two and Three for a combined total of seventeen years. And whereas Councilmember Steve Rice was appointed in 2012 and has been re-elected in each election since that appointment, serving as a council member representing Ward One for a total of eleven years. And whereas Councilmember Allen has volunteered his time and talents in the community, including but not limited to his roles in the City Council Vice President, 2012 to 2013, 2017, 2019, and through 2022, as a member of the Mitchell Planning Commission, as a member of the Lake Mitchell Watershed Group, and Allen was also instrumental in the development of Veterans Park for the City of Mitchell. And whereas Councilmember Rice has also volunteered his time and talents on behalf of the City of Mitchell, including but not limited to his roles as liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, member of the Gulf Cemetery Board, member of the Library Board of Trustees, and Council Vice President in 2014 through 2016, and as Council President in 2017 and 2018. And whereas the mayor and City, Mitchell City Council would like to recognize and thank both Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Rice for their contributions and service to the City of Mitchell, without those contributions, Mitchell would not be the community that it is today. Therefore, be a result, I, Bob Yerse, Mayor of the City of Mitchell, present Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Rice a key to the city as a thank you and in recognition of the twenty-eight years of combined service to the City of Mitchell. Therefore, be a result, Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, be declared Councilmember Dan Allen and Councilmember Steve Rice Day in the City of Mitchell in honor of their contributions and impact to the City of Mitchell. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, Mr. Sheasley, do you want to come up and give your, we have another presentation for you as well, so.
That way you're ready to go.
I was gonna tell you, Dan, if you get bored next year, Marty's chair will be open for you if you want to come back.
Your wife may send you back. Okay. Mrs. Michelle Sheasley with Modern Woodman is presenting another award tonight, so go ahead.
So I wanted to, um, we appreciate everything that you've done. So Modern Woodman has what is called hometown heroes. So we are making both of you our hometown heroes just for your dedication and everything you've done for our community. So Steve and Dan will each be able to donate to a nonprofit in their name in the community. So you'll just have to let me know who you want to donate that to, and I just have some little things here for you, so. Thank you.
I, I do have.
You wrote a speech.
I wrote a speech.
Your last time before council.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate it. But I have some thank yous I want to give. I want to thank the voters of Ward One and the citizens of Mitchell for allowing me to represent them. Uh, the job isn't always to tell you what I think, but to try and find out what you think, and I tried to remember that. I want to thank my family for the support and allowing me to miss events, be late for events, or reschedule events. I want to thank my employer for allowing me to attend meetings, many of which happen during normal business hours of eight to five. I want to thank former mayor Tracy for thinking me worthy of taking his spot in Ward One when he was elected mayor. I want to thank all the council members and city employees I was able to work with and got to work with. There was something to be learned from everyone. Finally, I want to thank all the people I worked with on the Library Board of Trustees, the Gulf and Cemetery Board, and the Chamber of Commerce. One thing that I've learned is you have to be patient. Government is slow, capital S-L-O-W, and sometimes only moves at the pace of culture change. It has been fun, and I would not have done it if I didn't like it and find it challenging, but it was time to step down. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've been up on a podium. Wow. Uh, thank you, Bob, for the last five years, I believe. It was great. Council, it was great working with you, and all you department heads out there, you've got a tough job ahead of you, and you've done good over the, all the budgets and, and everything. I, I, you've made our work easier. So I want to thank every department head tonight, and I gotta thank my employer, my wife. She let me do this for, for seventeen years, and thank you, Lori. So anyway, other than that, good luck to you, two new ones, Tim, Mike, good luck, and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your years of service. It's very appreciated. So with that, we have two new council members we're welcoming, Tim Goldammer, Mike Bathke. Welcome to council. Uh, we'll swear the four members that were elected this year in now. If you'll please stand and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. You do have it in front of you. If you want to read off it, it's up to you. Uh, and then once we're done, you have to sign this copy, so raise your right hand. I state your name, having been elected to the office of council.
I, since you've been charred, having been elected to the office of council, person.
Within, uh, within your ward.
Ward Four.
Within and for the City of Mitchell.
Within and for the City of Mitchell.
Davison County, South Dakota.
Davison County, South Dakota.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
The ordinance of the said City of Mitchell.
And the ordinances of the said City of Mitchell.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all the duties of the office of councilperson, ward.
Perform all the duties of the office of councilperson, Ward Four.
Congratulations. Welcome to the council. Great. We'll be a majority here pretty soon. Okay, with that, we'll call the meeting in order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Reverend. Oh, not here. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sabers.
Here.
Goldammer.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, we start out with election of officers. President of City Council, nominations, please.
I'll speak up on that. Um, I think on behalf of Mr. McCartell over there, I think you've done a great job, and your, your job also lets you get away a little bit once in a while. I mean, you might not know that, but I mean, I know you're here quite a bit, so. Um, I think you've done an outstanding job over the years, Doc or Kevin, and I'd like to see you continue that. So I make a motion that Kevin McCartell as our president of the council.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Kevin McCartell as council president.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion? Okay, we'll have to roll call this, please. Mr. Smith is on the phone. That's why we have to roll call everything.
Sabers.
Yes.
Goldammer.
Yes.
Dosher.
I.
McCartell.
I'll stand.
At least she didn't object.
Barrington.
Aye.
Bathke.
Yes.
Sharks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Council Vice President.
I used to do this to Dan Allen, so when he'd nominate me, I'll do Marty Barrington being he, uh, I'll throw it back at him for Vice President.
Okay.
Being it's his last year.
Is that all right, Marty? It doesn't matter. Okay, so we have nomination of Marty Barrington for Vice President, Council.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCartell.
Aye.
Barrington.
I also like to withstand.
Bathke.
Aye.
Sharks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, welcome, gentlemen. Uh, we'll have some meetings set up before we can do it at a later date, so once we get all that settled up, Stephanie will be contacting you. Approval and consent agenda items, items appearing on consent agenda may be removed by a council member for discussion at the beginning of formal agenda items. Uh, is there anything you wish to remove? I will point out that because there are two new council members, I jockeyed some boards, uh, board liaisons around. You see those before you tonight, so, uh, any questions or comments, let me know.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Sharks.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartell. Discussion. Anybody else wish to address these? Okay, roll call, please.
Dosher.
Aye.
McCartell.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Sharks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sabers.
Aye.
Goldammer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address mayor and members of City Council on item that is not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken. Anybody wish to address council at this time? You only get three minutes, Mr. Greenway.
Two and a half pages. Mayor, Council, Doug Greenway, Corn Palace Director. Uh, we don't get to see you on Wednesday nights always, so I wanted to take this opportunity to remind you and the public listening of our Farmers Market Events. So those started in the middle of June, and we go every Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30, and if you came in from the south side, you saw the plaza filled. We had fourteen vendors out there tonight, wide range of homemade, homegrown, and home baked items. So if you work quickly tonight, you can get out there and take something home. You'd be a hero. There's some amazing, and they got produce finally starting to show up now. That'll go all the way till, um, the middle of September. So we appreciate our vendors and our shoppers, so, uh, we appreciate your support of that. Uh, I wanted to give a festival update as well, um, and decorating as, too, just very quickly. Um, you know, recent rains have helped our corn come along a little nicely, so it's grown on the south side of the county, and they picked up some rains that Mitchell didn't, so it's looking quite well. Much, much taller than knee-high as is most of the corn, so right now it's looking very good, and with a cool July, we're pretty confident we're gonna have a nice crop, which we desperately need to decorate. As far as progress goes, most of the sourdough, which is the brown, um, seed-looking, uh, treatment, that is applied already. We'll finish, uh, uh, the rest of this week and early next week. The rye straw will begin to get delivered next week, so you'll start to see the straw go up on the side of the building, and of course, the corn murals will remain up until the corn has arrived. We'll take a mural down and put a corn mural up, and of course, our 2024 theme, which is what we roll over to our famous South Dakotans. Um, tourism visitors, where 2021, as you know, was a record year, um, so 2022 was down. We are now edging ahead of 2022. Uh, this last week, it was just a little over ten percent higher than 2022. Um, the week before that, we were about five percent higher, and the week before that, we were about two percent higher. So we're seeing stronger numbers than last summer, which is good. Corn Palace Festival this year, August 23rd to the 27th, um, starts on a Wednesday. We've got our vendors, our, um, we've added vendors, both, um, what we'll say food vendors and specialty vendors. So our community's gonna see some new folks that they haven't seen before, which we're excited about, cause it's going to go to our amusement. We've added a kids' pedal pole. A lot of people may not know that we host, the Corn Palace hosts the state kids' pedal pole and the national kids' pedal pole, which brings over two thousand people just for the national event, and the state's another fifteen hundred. So we're gonna have a local pedal pole this year at the festival. Not sure why that hasn't been done in the past, but, um, we're gonna add that, and it's gonna, I think, be a fun event. Concert-wise, we have concerts on Friday and Saturday night this year. Uh, more announcements will come out on this tomorrow and Friday, but on Friday night's show will be a country artist, Michael Ray. Um, a lot of these artists now aren't so much radio play as they are Spotify and online plays, where those artists are getting all their, their traffic. So Michael Ray played Friday night, and then Saturday night is, it's called the Rock of Ages Band. Uh, if you've heard of the Broadway show Rock of Ages, well, this is the Rock of Ages Show. It's not the Broadway play, it's a concert band playing, and it's all eighties rock music on Saturday. And then, of course, we'll have all the free entertainment in the plaza the rest of the evenings as well. So, um, with that, um, any questions you might have, I can answer. Otherwise, I just wanted to give an update to you in the community.
Okay, there you go. Anybody else wish to address council? Anything you want to say? Okay, all right. Action to approve resolution R. 2023-53, a resolution declaring necessity and expediency for issuance of revenue bonds calling an election there for and hiring professionals in connection therewith. This is Island, Mitchell, with the vote going 4-4 and, uh, ultimately the SRF loan application failing. We brought this back to allow it to go to a vote of the residents of Mitchell. Um, a couple of things I want to clarify. Uh, one of, the number you're hearing, the twenty-five million dollars that we're borrowing with the SRF, uh, loan, is not just the dredge. That covers numerous items. Mobilization, drawdown, which is 3.5 million, the drawdown we need either way to be able to, uh, maintain our wetlands upstream that we're putting in Kelly property, preparation of disposal sites, one and a half million, you see them right there, one million for an additional sediment pond or sediment trap at the beginning, uh, closer to, between Kelly property and Lake Mitchell, closer to the west end of Lake Mitchell. Uh, that may or may not be needed. We're, that's one of the things we're looking at. Contingency of four million, construction-based services of a million, and then, of course, the dredge is actually thirteen million dollars. Part of the reason we're looking for twenty-five million dollars in the total, as a total SRF loan, is because right now, we, we earn more money on the interest in our investments than we will spend in what we borrow the money on at the 3.25 percent. That is why we go, we're asking for the twenty-five million dollars. Um, Mr. Schrader, you got anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I think you hit everything that, that was needed. Uh, if there's any questions, I can certainly answer those. Okay. Ms. Owen, you want to add anything?
I guess the, the only questions that maybe I received over the weekend is, um, it is not doing an app opt-out. It's not really changing the way we're financing it. It's still an SRF loan. It's still the same interest rate. The difference is that it would be authorized by a vote of the people, and so, um, that's really the major change between the two. If there's questions on the resolution itself, the city did have bond counsel prepare the resolution to ensure that it was in the correct format, um, as required. And I, I guess I would just point out, I was gonna pull this up, that the resolution does set a date. Um, we attempted to pick a date that would work with, uh, Susan Kipke at Davison County, because they do help us with our elections. Um, that was the date that worked for them. I was trying to find it in here. Thank you, September 19th.
Yep.
Um, and we would, um, proceed from there. If council wants to change that date, we could talk about that. We'd have to get on the phone with Susan to see the timing that would work for her as well.
You know, typically, it's the, what, first, second Tuesday, second Tuesday of November. Was, is there a reason that we wouldn't do it? Is it, first of all, is?
There's no general election this year.
No, I know. I know. I'm just, I'm just making a point, but is there, is that a Tuesday that we're doing it, or is, what day of the week is that?
It is a Tuesday.
A Tuesday? Um, yeah, I was just thinking, you know, because that sometimes is in people's minds, is it possible to do it the second Tuesday, or did you look at that?
Originally, the reason why we plugged in just as a September date was to try to get that election done so that you could still go for the SRF application in October.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, and if council chooses in November.
No, and I'm not saying, I'm saying the second Tuesday in September. I'm just saying, like, instead of.
That didn't work for.
That didn't work for, okay. Yeah, that's all I was thinking. That's, I just thought.
But I should say to the public, too, the reason why we chose the September date was to try to get that election done prior to the next application period for SRF, which would be October. Um, any later, you'd be waiting till January for that.
No, I definitely don't want us to put this off any longer. I just was thinking if we could move it up a week. Um, I would move it, oh, sorry.
I'd like to say a couple, a couple things. You know, first, um, they come out, maybe that I was against the lake. One, I'm a hundred percent for fixing the lake. It's just the financing, or where it would put the city. Um, you know, I don't know why anybody would be not in favor of fixing the, the lake, um, you know. Naturally, I was hoping we would come up with some more financing available, um, ways to look at financing, and, uh, but anyway, with, I don't know how you could get a more fair way than a public vote on, on the election, so I'd like to make a motion to do the public vote, and, uh, but I would like it to be on the next public open, um, election, so we can get the most people there, and I think that's June 4th.
June 4th of '23? June 4th of '24?
Pretty sure that's our next open date. Pretty sure that's our next open date.
That's the next election date, right?
Yes, yes. And that would be my motion.
No, we can't do that. We can't wait that long.
I'd like to second it, but I do have, if you could pull some up for me, Stephanie, what is in the account for the lake right now?
It's going to take me a minute, because it doesn't run fast in here.
I've got a quick question, too. When did we come up with the September 17th or 19th date?
That was the only date.
Last week, when I asked you guys, that the mayor's, you guys lied to me and told me we could do it in, we could do it in October, November. You guys knew it was going to be that date.
No, we didn't have a date.
Last week, you didn't know it was going to be on the...
No, we were trying, we were looking at sometime between August and as soon as we could, we could get through it, so. They got with the county auditor, who assists with the election.
Three hours later, it was the 19th after we had the meeting.
Well, I know, waiting, going on your motion, Dan, waiting until next June, I think, will be even more detriment to the situation at hand if we're willing to consider doing this, if the public is willing to support this and move forward. Another eight months of dead time is only that much more than this thing is going to die. If the public is all for it, I mean, we need to find out yes or no sooner than later. I think it also helps out with budget for us, too, September 19th. So if it does happen to fail with public, we know, and we need to take a little different action. Are there funds that we got, are we going to try to invest them in something different? What are we going to do or not? So it gives us some guidance, too, as a council, what the public wants us to do, so we can continue moving forward.
Yeah.
People ask me, you know, that's awful quick for having a vote, but it's the fact that when the high school came out, their initiative measure did, it came out in the three-month notice. This is roughly about a three-month notice. So we're not doing anything faster than what they did for the high school, to have that different amendment, get the motion to get approved there. I just think if we sit around any longer than what it is, I think we need to find out for the public which way they want to do this, give this council direction, and then we can go from there. And if the council, if they don't want to do it, then we go somewhere else. But I just think waiting until next June, Dan, is just highly detrimental to the city and in general, so.
Thanks.
Joe, if we, if this, let's just say it pass, doesn't matter the date, June 9th, when would the start date be on dredging the lake? What year?
Ideally, we would start in 2024, the fall.
We have to finish up the design first, so.
Yeah, because we can't give, there will be another design phase contract that is budgeted in 2023's budget. That would not be approved until after we know if the project is moving forward or not.
Okay.
Bob, this is Jeff. Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I don't know if you can hear me or not, I'll try to speak up. And, you know, I can't disagree with what Dan is saying, that I think we need some type of private funds, in which we know the friends at Fire Steel said they're going to commit to, to raise some funds. And I think there's other alternatives that we can maybe look at, but the one thing that we can think about is the fact that we know we want to do the drawdown, or majority do at least, but between now and when the bids are actually left, and if we give the council some direction with over a year of saying, is there alternative ways of getting private funds? The council can still say no to the bid if we think it's too costly for the city. But I still think there's opportunity and time to try to look at other alternatives to possibly fund the dredging part of it. Thank you.
I have the cash balance, if you'd like to look. It's 1.89 million. The thing to keep in mind is there's transfers of cash to still go into that account this year, yeah, but those are to other dedicated projects, and some of that is for work that once we spend the funds, you get reimbursed for as well. So that's the current, as of right now, cash balance.
Okay.
But Stephanie, what about the community funds dollars that have, and the money that came, I get that's...
Are you talking about the project funds that the council has allocated? That is not in the lake fund, that's in the general fund unassigned.
Right, but I think it's important that Mike knows that that's there as well.
Yep, that amount is 4,429,837 dollars. But it's not in the lake fund, it's in the general fund.
Hey, my point is, I'm going to be a little hard on everybody here, and the two that laughed, I just don't understand how we haven't saved more money. We knew this was coming for how many years? And we don't have more money than that? And I think that the idea of what Jeff said about the drawdown, that should be on the table tonight. Let's get that done. You said we need to have that done, I agree. That shows people we're serious, and we're going to do something. And I really like the idea of somehow getting that part approved as soon as possible. But I did second his motion to change the date for the election, because I've never sat through a budget hearing yet. I want to know where the city's at, and that's why I asked her where we're at. It just baffles me that we haven't saved more money. We've been talking about it for, I know, 10 years.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I have a question. What does a special election cost? One item election?
Typically, we budget about $10,000 for a special election.
It's in the budget, or that's what it costs? It sounds like you already have it scheduled.
It's not in the budget, yeah. It would be...
Oh, I thought you said it's in the, we budget $10,000 for it.
No, I said typically, for an election, we budget $10,000, because we pay the county to run the election for us. So when we're budgeting for election, like we did this year, because we had a city election, we budgeted $10,000. And then I was just going to say, we weren't proposing a date, that's just a, it's a standard resolution. The bond counsel did send us a template. We can plug any date into that, and that recalculates, like, when notices have to go out. We just, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, would need to confirm with Davison County Auditor, since they run our elections, we contract with them to run our elections. So we just need to confirm.
I'm just saying, when I asked you the question last week at our meeting, you guys knew the date, but you didn't tell me that, for some reason, which sounds kind of fishy to me.
No, we were, actually, we were looking at...
Three hours later, it was on the agenda.
We were, we were looking at, I actually thought we'd do it in August, and when they went back and looked with the auditor...
You told me, you said October, November?
No, we did not.
Yeah, in the meeting, you did.
No, we did not. We said August, I had thought it would be the end of August, and my date was August 26.
He looked me right in the eye and told me...
I looked you right in the eye, and I said August 26.
You didn't say August 26.
I certainly did. And then when they went back and looked, she doesn't have to, she doesn't have to get in the middle of this discussion. I said August 26.
And I was there.
Yeah, well, obviously, you didn't listen.
I listened pretty well.
So August 26 is the date I was looking at. When they went to the auditor...
We have a motion in a second, let's call the question.
Okay, call the question. Roll call, please. It's to move it to the next election in June.
June 4.
June 4.
Please no.
Okay, well, it's called the question. Roll call.
Barrington?
No.
Basky?
Yes.
Charks?
No.
Smith?
Nay.
Sabers?
Aye.
Goldammer?
Aye.
Dosher?
Aye.
McArdle?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. So it'll be June 4, 2024. Okay? Reconsider action to award bid for golf course improvements, Project 2023-2 pursuant to the mayoral veto. So I put out a veto, I notified finance officer, I was going to veto the work on the golf course. That was done, because number one, it's an enterprise fund, it should be standing on its own. We've had to put a half a million dollars into it, and this requires another $181,000 coming out of general fund to do the work. So that's my veto. You have the opportunity to override that veto with two-thirds majority vote, so. Kevin, you want to start this off with the board?
What about the Lakeview Golf Course Board?
The Lakeview Golf Course Board, at their last meeting, approved proceeding with the lowest bid, in terms of what they thought it would be, and that was reducing the underlayment of the rock at the two greens, which would be improved, and then proceeding with adding in 9% contingency funds, which came to a total of about $180,000, on top of what we had budgeted for this year's improvements.
And what was the vote for that for the golf course?
Probably catching you off cards, sorry.
A little bit. I could look that up in the minutes, but...
It was seven to one to pass. But that has no bearing on this, Mr. Sabers, because, because right now, what we're doing, you guys approved it, I vetoed it, now it's up to you. If you want to override the veto, you have that opportunity right now by making a motion to override it, and then two-thirds majority vote.
I'll make a motion to override the veto.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sabers to override the veto.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. McArdle, okay? Further discussion? Okay, roll call. Hold on, hold on. Anybody in the audience want to speak to it? Should have put that out there for you guys.
Speak to what now? Why don't we get to the golf course? Why don't we get to talk about the last vote? The audience.
Because he called for the question. That puts it right into a vote, so, okay? Anybody want to speak about the golf course? Okay, all the, roll call, please.
Charks, no.
To be clear, to be clear, Bob.
You're voting to override the veto. So if you, two-thirds of you, well, six of you vote yes, then it will be overridden, and the work will continue. The project will go on if six of you vote yes.
You were in name.
Okay?
I mean, yes.
You're...
No.
All right.
Smith, or Charks?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Sabers?
Aye.
Goldammer?
Aye.
Dosher?
No.
McArdle?
Aye.
Barrington?
Aye.
Basky?
No.
Motion fails. Five to three. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for the City Council to recess, sit as the Board of Adjustment.
So...
Motion by Mrs. Charks?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chark. Goldammer?
Yeah.
Further discussion? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Sorry, that should be roll call with Mr. Smith on here. So roll call that, please.
He's continuing.
Is he still on? I thought he was...
Jeff, are you still on? Nope, he dropped. Okay, so that, that...
So...
We don't need the roll call then, because he dropped off, so, okay. So motion carries. Hearing an action on application for Jody Hofer conditional use permit. Jody Hofer has applied for conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 314 East 10th Avenue, legally described as Lot 10, Block 8, DA Scott's first edition, City Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota. The said real property is owned R2, single-family residential. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval, five zero with two absent, with the three usual conditions, license non-transferable, business cease to stop operate for six months, new application be required, and pass a fire inspection. There is one letter in favor of it, one against it, with concerns of the owners having dogs there. A fire inspection has not been completed there yet, but Santa Fall is working with them to try and schedule something. They just had some conflicts with this last week going on. There were no issues from Planning Commission at all with this. I can answer any questions that you have for it.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Charks?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application of Bailey Week conditional use permit. Bailey Week has applied for conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 1026 North Langdon Street, legally described as West 81 Feet of Lot 5, Block 4 of DA Scott's second edition, City Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned R4, high density. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with two absent, with the same three conditions that were on the previous one. There were two letters in favor, one made your packet, I received one today, there weren't any comments on that at all. There was no concerns from Planning Commission at all with this. I can answer any questions that you have.
The letter you received today was in favor?
In favor, yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Charks?
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application of Bailey Week conditional use permit. Bailey Week has applied for conditional use permit to operate a family residential daycare located at 308 South Menzies Street, legally described as Lot 7 and 8, Block 9, Applegate Edition, City Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota, said property is owned R4, high density. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with two absent, with the same three conditions. There was one letter in favor, one letter against it, due to high traffic in the area and no fence in the front yard for where their playground equipment will be. He has the business across the street to the west of this location. Planning Commission had no comments for this. This letter was received after Planning Commission. I can answer any questions that you have.
Move approval. Motion by Mr. McArdle?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington? Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application of Exchange Club Mitchell for a special event malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license located at Cadwell Park for August 2nd through August 13 for the 2023 State Amateur Baseball Tournament. Mr. Coster, any issues?
Mayor and Council, Chief Coster with the Police Department, we have no concerns about this request, and we recommend approval.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. McCartl.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application of Aaron Pembroke variance permit. Aaron Pembroke has applied for variance permit for a setback from the, an alley of seven feet versus sixteen feet for an overhead garage door parallel to the alley for a garage addition located at 297th Avenue, legally describes Lot 4, Block 7, Raleigh's first edition, City Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota. Said property is owned NS Neighborhood Shopping. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with two absent. There were three letters returned in favor of this. Since it's neighborhood shopping, Planning Commission heard this prior to the variance and they approved the garage addition. The variance comes into it with the fact that having just the overhead garage door being on the alley side of it, it's supposed to be sixteen feet versus the seven feet he's requesting. So the building permit has been approved already because it does meet setbacks for neighborhood shopping, so this is just for the overhead garage door itself. Applicant knows that he can't park in front of the garage door. He's going to be using it more for a shop area, so it's mainly for bringing in and taking out materials into his garage. I can answer any questions you have.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. McCartl. Second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Reconvene to City Council, entertain a motion, Board of Adjustment, to adjourn to City Council reconvene in regular session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goldammer. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing an action on the application of Exchange Club Mitchell for a special event malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license located at Cadwell Park for August 2nd through August 13 for the 2023 state amateur baseball tournament. Mr. Coster, any issues?
Mayor and Council, Chief Coster with the Police Department. We have no concerns about this request and we recommend approval.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartl. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address it? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Action to, excuse me, action to award curb tender off Sourcewell contract, Project 202330. Mr. Schrader?
Yep, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff is requesting council approval for the purchase of a 2023 curb tender off of Sourcewell. The amount is for three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. The contract would be with sanitation products and we're utilizing the contract 091219-CRB. Purchasing the equipment now will allow delivery within a year. Waiting will increase the price by eighty thousand with an anticipated delivery date in twenty-five or twenty-six. So we do recommend that council approve curb tender and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Move to award curb tender of, of Sourcewell contract, Project 202330.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Charts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Action to approve special event permit for shootout by the lake on Friday, August 11th and Saturday, August 12th, 2023. I think this is the rodeo, correct? Mr. Coster, any issues?
Uh, no, sir. We don't have any issues with it.
Yeah?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? Mr. Toby, you want to say anything?
I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear about it. There's some time up here.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bathke. Um, yep, we're planning on having a Bulls and Bronx event on August 11th and 12th. Um, we're gonna have a mutton bustin' with it. Um, I believe you have a liquor application from the VFW tonight. They will be serving the alcohol and, and that's pretty much it. Just a quick rundown of it.
Questions, Paul? Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck. Okay, we have a motion to second. All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Action to approve agreement A202324 GeoCom Dispatch Map Software Contract.
Mayor and Council, Chief Coster with the Police Department. Um, this is an ongoing agreement that we've had for a few generations. Uh, this is for the mapping software that our 911 center uses. When a 911 call comes in, this is the mapping software that allows them to know where it's at, helps propagate the phone number, and with us dispatching for six counties helps show which agency should be responding to that to assist the dispatchers in getting the correct responders to that call. Uh, you will notice that it begins June of this year and ends May of 26. Uh, the budget for this year covers the first year's obligation of five thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars. The reason that we are a bit late in doing that is that the company wanted to raise this year's rate after we were already in contract for that amount, so there was a bit of negotiation back and forth there, and then we subsequently missed the agenda for the second meeting in June. So we got the result we presented to you tonight for your consideration for approval.
Okay. Questions, comments? You retain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Charts.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCartl. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Action to approve Resolution R202350, resolution in support of an application for financial assistance to the South Dakota Housing Development Authority by Mitchell Area Housing, Inc. for the Ridge View on Foster Housing Project. This is a resolution that they're asking for to support the project so they can apply for grant money. Ms. Owen, you want to state anything else?
Correct. This is the third resolution of support that the city is being asked to approve. We've done two other ones. The first one was for Jensen Design Build for the South Ridge Estate Project. The other one is for Mahi for South Lake Estate. So it doesn't commit the city to anything. It's just the state is requiring that we say, yes, we've re, we've reviewed the plans, we have the capacity to serve the development, and we will take over ownership of, of the infrastructure once the project is complete. There's no financial requirements from the city at all. We're just doing a resolution of support of their application. That's all.
Okay.
Move to approve Resolution 202350.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Charts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goldammer. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? Okay. All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Is that you, Mr. Bathke?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Action to approve Resolution R202351, plat of Lot A2, a subdivision of Lot A1 of North Boyd's first edition, a subdivision of southeast quarter of the northeast quarter section, 23 Thompson 403 North Range 60 West, Fifth Primary Marine, Davis County, South Dakota. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with two absent. Um, this is just outside city limits. It's still within our zoning jurisdiction, though. Um, so county will have to hear this. They'll hear it July 11th and 18th. Um, he's just plating out a couple acres for some future development on that parcel. He will retain the remaining of the land. I can answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. McCartl. Who was the second?
Second.
Mr. Barrington? Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Hearing a first reading on ordinance O202305, amending South Point Village Plan Development District. Mr. Jennings?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with two absent. Um, we've received a request for the permitted uses be changed by amending multifamily dwellings of 24 units or less to just multifamily dwellings. Um, so it's just taking out the number of maximum for this area. Um, really, when the ordinance was written for this, it probably should have been a conditional use to have 25 and more, so it'd be two separate looks, two separate ones on there. Um, the apartments that are there already are considered non-conforming that are to the north there because it's by building, not by parcel, is what that was done there. Um, the applicants are looking to do some development on the southeast corner of this whole property. Um, we received one letter in favor for it and we received one letter that was stating from Menards that they are there already. Any future development, people know that they are there. Um, the applicant stated at Planning Commission that they read the letter and they have no issue with that. Um, the first proposal for moving forward for Phase 1 is about 35 units for an apartment building. I can answer any questions you have.
This is first reading as well, so there will be a second reading and adoption.
Approve first reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCartl. Second by Mr. Barrington. Approve first reading. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address it? Okay. All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Now, I've forgotten all the hoopla to begin this thing. We were gonna add an executive session, a short executive session to discuss some legal matters. Is it too late to do that, Mr. Johnson?
No, you could still, uh, get a motion in a second for that.
I would entertain a motion to go into an executive session for South Dakota Codified Law 12523, which is legal.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Charts. Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? All those who favor the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried to my office, please. No action will be taken after executive session.
That was just placeholder.
Oh, yeah. I figured, I figured when you told me.
Harvey, who else needs the sideline?
Just Jeff. I'll pour, I'll pour Jeff's, I'll pour Jeff's, I gotta with you. We take care of each other. Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Huh? They're really long, freaking out. Smitty texting me, goes, I'm sorry, I'm here, I'm totally lost. Honestly, I was thinking about your. You go check out, there is some, I don't know what it is, but it is a, it looks delicious. It's almond bread. It's a half loaf. It looks so good.
And it's still there?
Well, they had like three or four of them.
Cause my wife was there, leaving there at 5:30.
Oh.
She's been there.
Oh, she's, okay, so she did, right, I did see her writing it was starting. So I, you might want to check. I've done it. But my, my, my wife came and then I was, as I was closing, I kind of go around and I sometimes feel a little bit, I don't now because we get nice, we get good attendance, you know, uh, out there. And there's good, good mobility of people. And, uh, and then I would go home and I buy the same thing. We'd go home, do the same thing. It was kind of similar likes. Well, personally, I didn't know, I go, that seemed a little hinky to me. It just seems like sour grapes.
Well, we were talking last week, he said, just seeing what's coming. He said, he is a little bit, he is a handy man, but he's, it's sour grapes and it's, he says, I'm thinking, he says, I'm going to go, them on the agenda for sort of, yes, last week. But he didn't, this wasn't nice, anyway.
So you guys.
So. Yeah.
It's already, very good course.
It's a very.
Could you have, this is kind of a discussion today, so, yeah. I don't know, I guess we'll have to wait and see that. They just need more money to do the, they just need more money to do the, the reconstruction of the way to, huh?
Well, they need some money. There's, you know, there's no money there right now, just a little bit that they set aside for the last few.
Thirty million or?
Um, well.
Twenty-five without interest.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
It's a loan, right, over thirty years, so all of a sudden done, it's thirty-some million and it's done. But there's no tax increase. That's all, you know, gonna be appropriations from the city budget. Um, and, uh, you know, the concern, I mean, I keep both sides of it, I get it, but it's a valuable asset. Most cities would die to have a lake like ours in the community.
I'm gonna have to push off that vote for a year.
So I, that's when I stepped out, had to get, so what, so the motion was made, but not to do the election until next night.
June, so we have no idea what a mess our loan interest rate would be.
So I saw the motion was made, but damn, to do it, so why, but, and they had to vote on it, but why didn't they vote? So who, some of them must have voted against it, Susan obviously did, yeah.
There was, uh, several voted against that.
And some of them, well, it was against.
Okay, but there's enough that it passed. Oh, so it isn't gonna be till next, it's June. Now you lose a whole year.
It's kind of weird.
But here's what this does do. Does it, here's, here's what I think people don't understand. There's all kinds of money available to help with this project, from the federal government.
I just don't.
But until the city has the, they have the buy-in from the client to say, yes, we're moving forward with this, it's like any grant. You have to say, where are other sources of income, right? You can't, you could say, zero, we're doing nothing ourselves. We want it all from you. They go, sorry. When they see that, you know, thirty, fifty, seventy percent is coming from the city, then they'll say, yes, we'll help you. So you can't get it one before the other, so without the support of the city, you can't apply to get your answer.
It's like this pickleball, right?
Yes.
You buy it with something from the state. Well, they want to know they had a chance, but the city's gonna commit to it.
Right.
And the city's not gonna commit to it. They know there's at least half of the funding raised, there's a quarter raised, and then possibly.
You just can't do, you just can't, and the city is, is, uh, we run into that with the charitable foundation all the time, right, too? Hey, well, come in, we set aside, but we aren't getting the check until, but we, we, we've set that money aside. We can do that, it's a terrible organization. City can't do that. You can't just have a pool up, you know? So that's unfortunate.
So he, he made that notion about why you just save the money, you know, for a rainy day or something. And it should be, you know.
It's not authorized yet.
I know.
And, and how do you say, well, we, we're saving this much money a year. We're saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for, for any day fund or a project. We know it's gonna cost us X amount. Well, that means you're taxing people for something that shouldn't be.
But, yeah, you can't do that, yeah. So I think the lake does need, and this is the right way to do it. I mean, I, I spoke, I spoke in paper two weeks ago, that it's just, it's a hundred and years old. It needs to be cleaned out. And then I think with modern bonding practices, with the upstream work that they're doing, you're easily getting a hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred years out of this lake again. And that'll have to be done again, but certainly not, you know, two generations from now, maybe, instead of, instead of, you know, less than one. So, but, so now that I didn't, okay, I didn't, that was, so I didn't go the right way, the right way you expected. But the motion was made to move it to June, and of course you have to vote on it.
You don't have to, there's not a second, you don't have to.
But it wasn't so bad.
I thought it was a second.
Yeah. It was probably even shorter, because I think they would prefer it to be earlier, maybe, or maybe not.
He wasn't real in favor at the start, but but he wanted to put it on a poll.
Oh, yeah, correct, whatever.
We don't put a public order until next year, just in case it came.
I mean, I don't know how much it costs us to do an election.
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars.
Oh, it is. So, yeah, that, that is something to think about, too. I mean, I, I pay taxes, too, ten thousand dollars, nothing to sneeze at.
I know.
Ten thousand dollars a lot for corn balls. That's my new air conditioner unit and I'll be right.
Air conditioning unit for, uh, one of our parks or one of the shelters.
So it's, to do that, just because we weren't willing to wait, where we do in June, now it doesn't cost us that much because we share it.
Well, well, interest costs.
Yeah.
But if we're able to get some through another source because the city residents and the city council thereby support it.
Yeah, right. Well, interest could go down, too.
Could you imagine that? If you go through all the sponsors and then next year we validate interest is at five percent, and even if we get a federal grant or award, and then it's, our total cost is fifteen million, but with interest, it's gonna cost us.
Now, we've lost thirty percent of our spending power.
Yeah. I'm not on that side.
Hey, you should walk over to the farmer's market, take some like tasty treats off.
Don't go do that.
It's just round the corner of this, on the plaza. It's just around the corner of this, on the plaza.